Like I say, they would pay it which is their price.
And everything's that way.
Yeah, they've been little lose everything. Well, I mean, that was in dealing with guys who were looking at the above rent tank. Issue is, we had to get him a check almost immediately after we got the set bid, so that he could get that price on the steel price.
Actually, I actually signed it. We signed it that night. You signed it that night?
That's right.
We signed it that night because the previous time they canceled. They came back and it was literally thirty thousand dollars more on the tank.
Yeah, that wasn't his check. That was for the tank.
Yeah, that was just for the tank.
So we could get him that price. It was a steel price, it was fluctuating.
The crazy part is still ten to twelve weeks out for delivery. So even though we've got a long delivery period, the price is what they charge immediate.
And is our propane fluctuating as well?
Well, that's the next.
No. You should mention that, Mr. Bluth, because remember you guys approved natural gas bill and propane last month.
Right.
Well, soon as you did, they called us up and said they weren't in on it because price fluctuated enough to where they couldn't have that bid. And so I guess you know somebody else this month. Hopefully, we can make it happen.
The day of the fixed bid contracts are history. They're always doing rack plus or in terms of propane gallon plus. They call it another name, but it fluctuates so volatile that they're doing eight plus cost. Now, what I will say is, we got SCANA to block it in at fixed rate. I believe seventy-four it's on the next sheet. Seventy-four, a couple of names, let me call them again. But I don't want to overquote me, but I think it wasn't the price they approved last month. It was sixty-five cents a ton.
Yes, correct.
Around that area. And so we're looking at nine cents more. And then from the time that we got this one, it actually went down a penny from the time I could sign this, they sent that and we had to sign it again. And when we actually looked at, because the contractor we signed with, Mansfield is the one that backed out, allowed us to go after them for the difference. But when you did the math, the amount of money we'd spent on the tariffs and everything else to try to collect that, it's going to be near the wash.
Now, what do you use for propane? Natural gas?
We do, and our heavy months, obviously, the winter months, it literally is almost eight and a half kinds, the amount that we use in the winter months that we did on any of those.
So what's the propane price?
I'll have to pull that in. I don't want to take it all. And it's changing so frequently. Normally, I can rattle off numbers, but I almost have to have to keep a flash card today.
That's why I was asking. You know, we got that company from, were they at Gainesville or something? You know? If it's on, if they're adding on it. Some kind of freight costs would be cheaper if you're looking. The propane?
Yeah.
It would, but they didn't bid. I would think we had a lot of bid. Yeah. Okay. I thought Mr. Brantwell asked last time. They didn't bid.
Nobody did.
They didn't.
And I...
No, it's usually half-lacks and that. They didn't get, I don't know, five.
The prices are so volatile, nobody wants to do a fixed bid because they're going to be clocked on it.
Well, they're smaller.
Yeah.
You're talking about...
Yeah, I'm there. Yeah, Framers though, that Framers though, that's why I was...
You can touch that guy. Well, I was actually a little surprised that we didn't have a lot of propane because last year, that's something you usually get. Yeah, let's go back and make sure we're still on these. You'll have any questions about this? Don't back out. I'm going to recommend that on Thursday. All right, now on to the SCANA contract. As I said, the other company backed out. They said they did not order that. And so if you guys don't have any questions, I'm going to recommend SCANA seventy-four nine cents per ton on Thursday. Any questions about either of those? I know we're kind of mixed up here. All right, on to the Prakata approval. We talked about the Prakata thing last month. We showed you a video. Done a little more research. It's a good product. We talked to these people several times. We tried out their product. My plan is to do on Thursday, we'll talk about it some more with the video that we released. If nothing happens, my plan is to make a recommendation to approve that bid by May five, six, four. Stop paying to our students and trying to save that money.
And Dr. Le, I'd point out too, that that's an April price that they're honoring for us. They're holding it for us. That price has gone up like twelve percent since that date, but they're honoring the April price for us.
Yep. So we're getting the process.
And they also have the technology on the shelves that will be delivered here the next day. And we have EPC lined up to start the install the following day as well.
And that's a big deal. A little bit, we're, a lot of the companies we deal with, our experiences, sure, just things.
We probably told this before, but remember Robby, if we approved this, who was it from?
All right, on to the policies. These current policies that are part of our consistent revision process, they will be posted on the Gilmore County Student Assistant Website. For further comment or second reading, we'll order the education work session next month. So feedback and public deliberations, these will be brought upon in regular session next month. Our first three policies, policy IPD, no structure of break time, policy JCEB, student hearing reception, policy IKDB, the vice concept complaint resolution process. There's a model policy designed for us by GSBA and our department, and policy JRV, parents' bill of rights, it's also new, it's also a model policy. Any questions about those? On to the second reading policies. These have been posted on our district websites since our work session last month. It's submitted to GSBA and legal counsel for review. We received no public feedback on those policies, but we did receive recommendations from GSB legal counsel for policy GBKA, professional personnel layoff. We propose revisions and highlights. Those policies are second reading. Our policy GAMA, drug-free workplace, and policy GBKA, professional personnel layoff. Do you have any question about those changes? On Thursday, I will let them have these policies to be approved. All right, next area following our state's plan, the fiscal accountability. So we had Ms. Clark come up and do the student nutrition report.
Good evening. I hope you're having a good summer. I just wanted to cover just a couple of things with our financials. We looked pretty, we looked pretty good in the month of April, even though our food costs continued to creep up there. We were ninety-eight thousand eight hundred seventy-six dollars. Our revenues were over the expenditures. So we finished up the month of April nicely. I feel like, well, the month of May looked well, is looking pretty good as well. Our seamless summer, the numbers that we're serving this year is already more than we served in a single day last year. So we're continuing to serve. On average, it's looking like about five hundred meals, five hundred lunches a day. We did add an additional site, which is, which has been very successful. So everything's looking good with seamless summer. Our food bid, we had, as of last Thursday night, it was official. We have a partnership with Cisco. We had a conference call on Thursday and everything looks like we're lined up. Our first delivery will be before school, so everything's lining up nicely. We're working with them on just products that we need for them to carry. So it's, we're, all day today, we were back and forth with, you know, just food, K-12 foods that we need through Cisco. So right now, it looks like it's, it's going to be a great partnership. It's going to be something that we develop along the way. So, but right now, we're on, you know, on a good, a good start as far as the food bid. I mean, yeah, with Cisco. And that's all we, and as of right now, it still looks like we will have paid lunches next year. So nothing has changed. I'm still holding out, but right now, it looks like that we'll have paid lunches next year. Any other questions?
You don't have any questions over there?
Yeah, I think you made a free lunch. Free lunch is all money and cash, the tax pay, the period. The tax, um, for the free lunches, people that can't afford one.
Yes, sir.
Not the most, the parents can pour the food.
Yes.
So I don't have a problem with this.
Right. Well, and...
We'll make sure we communicate that.
The issue is, and we're going to work very diligently on the fact that the free and renewed forms have to be filled out. And we're going to really place the importance on that.
And they get them out because they don't have, they didn't want to, look at that category because they're getting free lunches anyway.
Your example, right.
And we make more money off, we make, we make money off. We get more, we don't wait, man, we get more money for, for, for the filled out applications. So...
When it's not seamless summer, you're correct. And, and you know, there was no real incentive through nutrition to fill out those forms last year, but that we found out that it was a need. We had a great need in those forms that we were losing. We lost a lot of the information that we, we really should have obtained through those forms, but we are processing those forms this year, so.
A lot of ladies' grants, kind of one, it's all based off information on those forms.
Technology.
None, speed rate, money, those forms. There's a lot of information around all that. Other monies are pending.
Right.
And I don't want to say a big, a big thing I proved about that.
No.
I'll play, you know, anybody, I'm not going to let it take away.
Right. I understand what you're saying. And, and I'm the same way. I feel like that our biggest hurdle was getting the groceries here. I can do, I can do anything with my cabinet full and my refrigerator full, so we're good. And I will assure you, no child will go hungry. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Next, we'll have Ms. Trenton Hill present the budget update. Dr. DeWitt.
We have our financials, purchasing policy expenditures. So we have our purchasing policy expenditures for June, and most of these are for disclosure purposes only. We have one that was board-approved in May and one over fifty thousand with Charles Black that is exempt from policy GD, DJDB. Any questions on any of those?
Are these three, say these costs, are they the 2015 these costs or 2020 these costs?
Everything on here is going to be, that's all going to be the 2015. The only thing we have paid for out of 2020 is our Clear Creek Elementary School. But next, we have our budget financial report for the month of April, our ten months. And we have total revenues for the year, thirty-nine million, five hundred and seventy thousand. Our local tax revenues is just twenty million, three hundred and thirty-two. Our total expenditures for the year-to-date period is thirty-four million, six hundred and five thousand. Leads us with an excess of revenues over expenditures of four million, nine hundred and sixty-four thousand. Our current fund balance at the end of May is twenty-six million, sixty-three thousand
Anyone have any questions, Ms. DeWitt?
Next, we have our East Plus expenditures. Our 2015 expenditures during the period were six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And that consists of five hundred and nineteen thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine scoreboards, twenty-seven thousand, three hundred and seventy-seven dollars of keyless entry. We had technology, thirty-two thousand, three hundred and thirteen dollars, and we had forty-one thousand, two hundred and five for the GHS weight room. Any questions on this? Our 2020 East Plus expenditures were seven thousand, four hundred and forty dollars, and that was some expenditures at Clear Creek Elementary School for the, I think it was the special ed playground, fencing, and gates for the back roadway. We also had local capital projects. We have seventy-five thousand dollars expenditures for the fuel tanks of that hundred and forty-eight thousand purchase order. We extended seventy-five thousand to get those orders. For our East Plus collections, this will be for the month of April. We had total collections of six hundred and forty thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars, and that was a twenty-one thousand, eight hundred and ten dollar decrease from prior month, the eighty-eight thousand dollar, eighty-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five dollar increase, or sixteen percent over last year. So next, we have, we have two salary schedules. We have the tunnel salary schedule. We got the one from the stadium for our pre-K, so we didn't present that one earlier, so that has come in now. And we also have your bus driver's salary schedule. And I put that in here again this month because we need to re-approve this. When we did our application to increase that, we increased the local. We should have increased the state base. So the state has sent guidance out last week as to what that state base was, so you'll see two breakdowns in the salary schedule. And the local, because that's what it was last year in the state, is what the state actually went into the PIB. Any question about either one of these salaries schedules? And next is the twenty-two amended budget. Will be up for approval on Thursday, as well as the twenty-three budget. And the twenty-three budget here is just a little different than what I presented at the college meeting. We changed that. We increased the revenue and the expenditures for buses. Because after we had presented the budget, we got notification that we're going to receive eight budgets from the governor's FY22 amended budget. So we plan on trying to order and spend all of that money next year for eight buses. So you'll see that on, on this one. That was the change.
Because we were afraid we didn't go ahead and get them online now. We've been waiting a while.
We have three years to purchase those, so, you know, we would have three years. Some districts may wait, but we didn't know with the shortages, they actually need some. We would have been buying some from East Plus, but that will actually change that. We'll order three of this.
How would that, look, boss, I'm here. Go ahead, Ms. DeWitt. How would that put us on our schedule of buses that we have now?
Well, it'll probably put us a little ahead because we had really budgeted when they did this plan several years ago, when they put them on, like, twenty sixteen East Plus and the twenty twenty. Our plan was for four buses a year.
Right.
This past year, we only got three. We got two from CARES and one bond. So we're sort of one behind them last year. So this will really catch us up and have a few access. So in the next year, FY24, we would just need to determine, are we caught up enough? Do we not want to buy any, or do we want to go ahead? So they would evaluate the situation on buses.
And we have to evaluate, we'll see along this. So I was just, yeah, with that, with the money.
No, Samantha's not here, and I'm sure she can tell you, you know, there's still some out there. The new ones have air conditioning. We have not replaced. We still have some without air conditioning.
I know that's, that's our off.
Yes, is to give them all. So we started this initiative in 2015. So, and the first buses we purchased were completely out of general fund, and we purchased five that year.
We did. Yeah, and this, this ain't really kind of a win ball. We were expecting like...
Two.
Oh, three. You don't have any air conditioning in there again?
I don't.
I just checked the sand to verify.
Sand, sand's a strange...
Is possibly a retrofit.
We retrofitted any that was probably good enough to do that. They went back, seems like there was maybe four or five that they did.
Yeah, records.
No.
Yeah, you're a lot.
Yeah, I don't think now that it would be, but I would think we would be at least more than half, maybe edge of two or three force.
This is going to put us a lot harder than that, or than that effort.
Yes.
That's good, that's good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Hill. So I have no analysis, so we'll move on to public participation. Policy DCDIR, one of our new policy, has passed final agenda items in four work sessions. It would be intended for the board to allow input solely on agenda items from those of attendance. All presentations to the board are debriefed and are intended for the board, your comments or concerns, without taking action. All other time limits and topic restrictions remain in effect. Is there anyone here for public participation? Okay. Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board move into executive session to discuss personnel litigation, real estate, and school security. No action will be taken following the executive session. Motion to adjourn session.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
I'll bar.
I'll bar.
We'll move on with the approval of the work session agenda. So, Mr. Chairman, I recommend a motion to approve work session agenda as presented. I have a motion.
I have a motion.
Second.
Second.
I'll bar.
I'll bar.
At this time, we'll call Mr. Steve Fields of Tolu's Wounded Church for our indication. Thank him, Mr. Pitts.
That's great. Father, I thank you for our great country and the opportunity that we have to freely honor you, the living God. Thank you for our officials here that serve our community and our families to make important decisions as we move into the future. We thank you for our families, and we pray that you would help the mothers and fathers and families as they lead their children. We thank you for the opportunity of a great education, and we just pray that the deliberations here today, that you would guide, lead, bless. We do thank you for our country, and we pray for our country that you would help us as we move into a very uncertain future. We ask that you would guide us and lead us and help us to humble ourselves before you, to walk with you, and to be people of conviction that walk before you in a pleasing way. We pray in the name of Jesus Christ.
So I plead stand. Pledge. Pledge, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Make him stand. At this time, we have a very special recognition this evening, so Ms. Trenton Hill will come to the podium and recognize our finance department. I don't think there's any secret that we have messed around, but I'll let this panel explain about their latest achievement.
Good evening. Well, tonight, I get to do more than present financial statements, do all. So we're going to recognize our district and school finance team for completion of the University of Georgia Carl Jensen Institute Certification Program for School Finance and Accounting Personnel. This program, it's a new program that was developed, and it was specifically for K-12 school-based training. And that was something that was really never around, so it was, was really good to have something that would meet our needs. So we, we had this come about about a year and a half ago, a year ago, and we signed up the first group to participate. We sent three people, and it was so good, they came back, and we signed the rest of the bookkeepers up. During the program, our participants faced study, financial governance and QDE, internal controls, fraud, how to assess risk and detect and prevent this from happening, and that's a big field in the school system. They did governmental accounting, school-level budgeting, purchasing, and report preparation. So we asked the volunteers with the finance department, and I was amazed that everybody wanted to go. So we did send them. It was very extensive. It included in-person classes, Zoom classes, homework assignments, and group projects. These individuals took time away from their work, family, and personal time to earn this certification. So I would just like to say how proud I am with this group, and they don't get a lot of recognition because a lot of the work that they do is behind the scenes. So they work here, they're some of the hardest workers in the district. They're usually the ones that open the door and close in the evenings. So if I call your name, please come up. Amy Rogers. Amy is our Clear Creek Middle School bookkeeper. Amber is payroll, so very important job. Mamie Santor. She is our bookkeeper at Ella J Elementary, and she's on vacation. She could not be here. She's Gilmore High School bookkeeper and College and Career Academy. Paige is our accounting manager here at the district office. Penny is our bookkeeper at Clear Creek Elementary School. Regina has been handling purchasing and overall district bookkeeper. And Sabrina Teague. Sabrina is our accounts keeper. Let's go and get in a little bit closer, I'll get a picture of you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Rob.
Thank you, Ms. Hill. Very proud of these ladies and their, and their achievement. Big deal to be part of first, first year plans. All right, moving on, we'll go to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items will listen to the board's consideration for rate of the session on June twenty-third. Uh, consent agenda items will listen to the board's consideration for rate of the session on June the third, one twenty-two. Subject which the board is going to add or remove items from the consent agenda later and review its reparations for that meeting. Our consent agenda items are the minutes, the five sixteen, uh, twenty-two work executive session, five nineteen twenty-two regular session, and five thirty-one twenty-two call meeting. Also an out of state overnight field trips, which you can find in folders. And as we go through time, do that a couple of items that I want to suggest to move the consent agenda, just to move them out of the way. First item of the superintendent's report, following our strategic plan is academic achievement. Uh, on your agenda is strategic planning. And so I'm going to call Ms. Lottie Mitchell to the stage. She's going to do a presentation on our strategic planning process. Now we're going to be moving through that in the next few months.
Good evening. It has now been over five years since we began the strategic planning process for the twenty seventeen through twenty twenty-two strategic plan. Each year, we have continued to meet and review the plan, making edits and additions as needed with input from our stakeholders and approval of the revised or updated plan by the Board of Education. At the five-year mark, most school districts normally take time to complete a new needs assessment, reevaluate the current strategic plan, and begin a process of developing a new strategic plan. This is also a great time to begin this process. Dr. Ridley is finishing his first year, and hopefully, we are post-pandemic. So it's a good time to reevaluate and to begin our new needs assessment. Tonight, I just want to share a little bit about the process we will be following as we begin working on the new strategic plan. Okay, this is just a little timeline. The first thing is conducting a needs assessment. What are the needs of the district? We have already begun this. Um, in April, we began our first formal needs assessment. Um, Lynda Patterson led us, working with administrators, teachers, parents, board members, and community members to work on the consolidated LEA improvement plan known as the CLIP. This is required for federal programs. On June sixth, we held our annual leadership retreat with building and district administrators to discuss the process we will follow as we begin working and to develop a new strategic plan. Tonight, we're going to go over our mission, our current mission, vision, and belief statements. And I wanted to give you all a chance to look at those. Um, we are also going to discuss the anticipated target areas and overall goal areas for the strategic plan. We are extremely appreciative of all the work of the former super team members who have worked on the strategic plan. But at this time, as we're going forward, we're going to invite new teachers, the new school governance teams, parents, and community members, and give more people an opportunity to be involved in this process. At the June sixth leadership meeting, principals were instructed to invite their current S G T members, parents, and community partners. We are also asking for a variety of teachers and classified staff members to be involved in the super team. And each member will also serve on a target area subcommittee. As names are submitted, individuals will be invited to serve on the super team and also be assigned to a target area subcommittee. We want to ensure that we have a variety of representation for each target area. On August third, now we're going to stakeholder input. Um, on August third, Dr. Ridley will do his, um, welcome back at our kickoff, and he's going to go ahead and address the staff. All of our staff will be there, and he's going to go ahead and talk to them about beginning the strategic planning process. Um, which will be developed over the next few months. We will also be reaching out to staff, parents, and community members through surveys to reach a larger stakeholder group. Dr. Ridley has utilized surveys a lot this year, and it's it's provided a lot of valuable information. And people seem a little bit more comfortable sharing their opinions through these surveys.
Yeah, I would say the more you do, the more people are good. So the responses have been very good, and we've got a lot of good information for them.
Yes, he's already, he's already sent surveys to staff, community members. So we already have a lot of information for our needs assessment even again. Um, we are going to host our first super team meeting, August thirty-first. And then we'll have target area, um, target area subcommittees meeting in September and October. After we work on this process for a few months, a draft of the strategic plan will be developed to share with the super team at the November eighth meeting. And at that time, additional comments and suggestions will be taken into consideration for a final draft to submit to the Board of Education to review at the November work session and then submit it hopefully for approval at the board meeting in November. So that's, that's what we're hoping. We're working on the needs assessment now. We're going to start gathering stakeholder input, working on our committees, and then have a draft.
And I challenge our strategic planning team to really make the effort to go out and gather parents for feedback that are not the same parents we always go to. Find people that, you know, aren't, aren't paying to the teacher or that we can get to come in and talk to us about the real issues that, that their families are dealing with and real ideas they have in the school district. Now we can make educational experience more authentic.
The next slide has our current vision. Um, this is something when we began the process five years ago, we sort of thought that, you know, over the years, we've kept the same vision statement, mission statement, but people did have some input. So tonight, we're just going to go over it and give you a chance to look at it. This is our current vision. Our vision is to develop lifelong learners to enrich their community through the creation of learning environments that challenge and empower every student to reach his full potential to succeed in the workforce, military, or post-secondary opportunity. And our committees and stakeholders will have a chance to give input on this if we want to make any changes to our current vision statement. Um, if we want to add, take away, completely go to the new one. But this is something that will be developed in the process. Next is our current mission. Every child, every opportunity, every day. Dr. Ridley, did you want to say anything about that?
I would love to because, uh, the vision is the long-term goal of what we want to achieve in schools. It should be more general. The mission is really more about what we do on a daily basis. And I love every child, every opportunity, every day. In fact, I remember sitting in a parking lot waiting for my interview here, and it was on that little sign outside. And I saw it there, and I was like, that's, that's right. I will work here. You know, that, that was one of the things that really grew me. I think it should be a major part of my brand. I don't know that it's the mission that, that really speaks to every employee about what it is they're supposed to do every day and how what they do affects the bottom line of student achievement. But, you know, I, I think every child, every opportunity, every day should be part of the brand. We should tattoo it on everything we have. But I don't know, I think it's part of the conversation we need to have, if that's a mission of that. That's just my thoughts on it. I'm just, I'm just like, oh, like everybody else.
And next is our beliefs. These are the current government and school beliefs, and I'm going to bring those to you. I think you each have a copy of the slides.
And this is where we're going to kind of start the conversation, is looking at these beliefs and talking about, uh, you know, these were all done in a, in a pre-pandemic world, and I think a lot of our values have shifted in some ways. And the world looks a little different. The world of work is a little different than it was four or five years ago. Our A P S actually did some work in preparation for this process. I challenged them to work together, come up with a list of, of beliefs. Because I wanted them as future administrators, well, they are administrators, but future principals and district leaders hopefully, to have some skin in the game. When we start having these conversations about our beliefs, I'm going to use this document and the document that they produced as a starting place when we start having those conversations. And I was very proud of the work. It is amazing job.
And I think they worked on it after some of the surveys you'd sent out, too.
Yeah, I gave them that information and, and I won't get all in there.
Four hours, I think. It was a lot. I think you guys loved us for an hour, and we're there for four hours.
I think we had a meeting with you after, which you missed it because you're still working on it.
So they, they put some good work into it, and I was particularly impressed.
It was, it's great. Okay. After beginning the needs assessment process, which really, we've had our first formal meeting in April. I said that we've been doing this sort of all year because Dr. Ridley's been gathering information and, and, um, getting input and feedback. But, um, after beginning the needs assessment process, this is a draft of the strategic plan strategy map. And it has the following target areas. Academic achievement for all, parent and community engagement, operational effectiveness, and fiscal accountability, and high performing workforce. And the goal is for the achievement or success in any of these target areas will ultimately result in an increase in academic achievement for our students. So this is just a draft. This is, I should have worked draft across. This is what we have at this time as our map as we go into it.
Because there were so many things in our strategic plan, previous strategic plan, that were kind of out the window because of the pandemic and the loss of six of our guys. We sort of boiled down the current strategic plan into this flow chart. And this is what we've been working on all year. And, and part of what I wanted to do was make it simpler for all staff members to understand what is the point of being here every day. And so we've really been focusing on three results targets all year. And that is getting all students on reading on grade level, increasing proficiency, general performance on Jordan milestones, and increasing student satisfaction. I felt that if we, those were all embedded in the current strategic plan. And I felt if we focused on those three fundamental things, we would see growth in all the other areas and give us a good baseline to start our planning process. And actually, we were not planning on doing this for another several months because we were expecting COVID in November to come in first thing in the fall. So when they changed their rotation schedule and put us back in here, um, that really allowed us the opportunity to move this whole process up several months, which is great because it means that we can have you a product approval by November, and we can already be working off the draft as we move forward. So I'm, I'm actually very excited when we have this opportunity to move it forward this far because I believe it's going to be a catalyst for a lot of progress.
Okay. Here you will see the four proposed target areas, chairpersons, and board members, building, district administrators, and staff already assigned to various target areas. We also want to make sure we include a variety of community members and parents. So what we did is with our current administrators, and we had assigned them to a group. And we tried to make sure that we had a principal in each group. And we had, we tried to spread it out. We have a board member, you can see that you all have been assigned to a group. Um, and we're going to have more community members. Like, as we said, we've asked the principals to provide S G T members. Each principal's going to provide parent names, community partners. And so we want to have a wide variety of people represented, um, on the committees. And the very next page, this is what we sort of shared with the principals at the leadership retreat. Um, we did talk about that for teachers, we wanted a few of elementary, middle, high. We want to make sure we include teachers that teach S P A, E S O, E I P remedial, C T A E, fine arts, other. Um, we want to make sure that we have some of our counselors, um, included. We want to make sure that we have classified staff. We'd love to have some nutrition, hair professionals, bus drivers, maintenance, office staff, janitors. Um, we want a wide variety. Even when we look at our parents, we want some parents of our E S O, our E L students. We want some parents of our students with disabilities, economically disadvantaged. We want a variety of representation in the group. There, I will show it. Okay. And this, just the last slide, just sort of shows what the planned components will have when we have our full strategic plan. Of course, we'll have our new, if we revise or update our mission, vision, and belief statements. Um, we'll have our target areas, our long-term goals, measurable objectives, strategies, funding resources. It's always good to know if we have to, um, finance some of these action steps, how, what funding sources we'll use, and evaluation to measure if the impact of these actions. This is just sort of an overview and a start. Is there any questions about this process?
And I wanted to say that if you look at that last page, one of the most important pieces on there is the evaluation. That's going to be in the form, I don't like using the term, uh, and I can't remember. Scorecard.
Oh.
Oh, scorecard, balance scorecard.
Down scorecard.
That's the buzzword. Okay, I don't like the balance scorecard. But we need to be able to report to the public our progress on each indicator of strategic plan. That's how the public should know whether or not we're progressing according to our local plans. Of course, our C C R guys report it. I don't want, I don't want to discount that. But when the public says, and I give you what I'm paying for, that needs to be the indicator. Looking at our report card. Uh, and we don't have that right now because a lot of those indicators went away with COVID. So we need to start fresh, and we need to keep our strategic plan simple and clean so that our employees can understand it, so that everyone can understand it. And they look at their report card, they know what they're looking at, and they can see how well you feel like that skills are. And it's required for to choose separate course tasks, so.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Penelope. All right, next up, in fact, if you recall, a couple of months ago, I had you revamp our, our graduation requirements. Will we up the number of courses to twenty-six? And before we send it off to the printers, Mr. Bowen had asked to make one slight amendment to it. It doesn't change the number of courses, but it opens up the two requirements for the requirement for a C T A pathway. Opens it up to allow students to complete a advanced academic pathway or a fine arts pathway or a C T A pathway. So do y'all have any questions about that? It's just a minor word before we send it to the printers. So that being said, if y'all don't have any questions, I'm going to suggest that we move that out to the consent agenda. Y'all have to vote on that with a nod. If y'all are okay with that, we can move that to the consent. All right, we'll move that to the consent. Next up is the Georgia Vision Project. Uh, part of your G S D F, G S D A recognition application requires that we attest our strategic plan aligns with the Georgia Vision Project recommendations. Uh, quality board recognition requires alignment of at least five recommendations. Our plan currently aligns with fifteen, uh, so we're good there. If y'all don't have any issues with approving that, then I want to also suggest doing that in the consent agenda. Good? Thank you. Fair community engagement. Uh, Ms. Patterson, as a year of review, show me.
So I just have a few pictures that I wanted to share for this year with the, the events that we had for our parents. So one of our fewest events was in April, we had a family literacy night, and all the schools came together to work on that. Each of that elementary school also had their literacy events throughout the year. Um, we celebrated some academic successes. We had various concerts and musicals. Our veterans day celebration at Good Creek Middle School. And we, and we can't put school nutrition and not need those pictures with parents. And these are just the two of the highlights. There's no way that can be compared to everything that you can do.
All right, next up, we have the Sequoia Regional Library Board nomination. Uh, on Thursday, I'm going to make the recommendation to nominate Ms. Jennifer Painter to serve on the library board for the Sequoia Regional Library, she will be replacing this new president who has served on the board for three terms, which I think is the limit. Recommendation for approval, Ms. Painter's nomination will remain in the reception on Thursday. Y'all have any questions about that? Yeah, we'll do that on Thursday. All right. Next, following our strategic plan, we have high performing culture and workforce. So you have the personnel list in front of you. We'll discuss hiring recommendations and compensation later in executive session. And next under that, we have the GSBA board recognition. The recognition application requires the board to approve its own recognition application. So, if y'all have any questions about that, uh, I can move that also to the consent agenda. Y'all okay with it? Alright, next up, we have operational effectiveness. Code of Conduct is for your review. Jessica Justine, uh, come up and tell us a little bit about the code of conduct.
Hello, Ross, it's that time of year again where you get all these manuals. And so, looking through here, everything that you see that's highlighted, either has been an addition that has been added, or if it is something that needs to be removed, it's highlighted and has a stripe through. Okay, and this is the complete document. So, as you look through, um, throughout the week, if you have any questions, you know, feel free to let us know, we'll be happy to answer any questions for you.
And Jessica, a little vacation last week, that's why you just did this today. Yeah, would you like to ask a question? Yeah, what, how have the dress code changed, Jimmy, or?
The dress code did change a little bit. Last year's dress code was more broad and so they did get a little bit more specific. And really, it just became more clear to all the parents what the requirements for the dress code would be. Because sometimes we would have questions about, from parents, and they would ask, but what exactly does that mean? So, instead of it being left up for interpretation, it's more clear. And it did, we did have a meeting with all the administrators to go over that, both the district and office school level administrators. And this was the district dress code that they decided on.
Y'all can have a few minutes to look over that. If you have any questions, keep in mind we're taking a call. Alright, next up, we have fuel bills. Y'all have a, print out a few bills on that? We've had to go back at all three of these companies several times to clarify some freight charges and things. I wanted to make sure that you understood that. Because on Thursday, my intent is to recommend Morgan and Hunt. Do you look best to top them? Where is Morgan and Hunt?
I got it right here. It says, the closest one to us, the other two are further south.
They're both in Indiana, are they?
Yes, they're not even here, they're, it's a local, it's a Georgia company. I'll, I'll have for you in just a second. Yeah, they're out of rural Georgia.
Oh, they're rural, okay.
That's their physical address, so they're, they're the closest. They're also the most transparent in this whole process.
Well, that's, that's what I was about to say. You'll notice that diesel price is point zero three seven five over the cheapest rack price available. Uh, after reviewing some of the, the next lowest bid, I'm not gonna say it out loud. The next lowest bid is point zero three three four over the highest rack. We, they're actually a company we use now. We went back through their bills and noticed they were, they were giving us that overall rack price based on the highest rack price available. And, uh, we had been, their freight costs are a lot less transparent than what Morgan and Hunt appears to be. So, it just felt like we were paying a lot more than we anticipated to that other company. So, my suggestion is that my recommendation is going to be to go over Morgan and Hunt. You can take that and look at it over the next couple of days. Uh, if you have any questions, feel free to ask. To address several questions and get some clarity on some things. And what, what do we pay them per gallon? I mean, what, what, what's the price right now?
What's our overall rack price?
Yeah, what we pay them? What is, what is our overall rack price right now?
It's, it fluctuates from every, I'd have to pull that, that, it changes literally every day. It's so volatile, one, one week it'll be fifty-seven, four.
Let's think of like four fifty, four twenty.
Yeah, four, yeah, and then it went up to four seventy and, and it even shot up over five dollars at one point, came back down under four. That, that's, that's the hit or, hit or miss mark about this one, they say.
The rack prices fluctuate. Yeah, it goes up, we've been paying almost four cents. So, what, what we, how's our, our diesel, how do you budget?
That's, that's exactly, that's some of the questions we asked. Because the thing, here's the other thing that was really frustrating for us is that when we ask what the rack rate was, they won't tell you what the rack rate is and they just bill you for the rack rate. And then, these additional charges are on there, they make that percentage over rack. Morgan and Hunt takes the, when they have the various levels of rack, they take the lowest rack at all times. And they, they provide that in the building and then we get billed on it. They won't, they won't reveal their cards as to how, like, for instance, petroleum traders. If you look there, it says, um, over highest rack rate. That's just based on experience. When we call and ask for the rack rate, they won't give us the rack rate. It's just whatever the, the dollar amounts that are out there on the market, that becomes rack.
We, we budgeted about three thirty a gallon, which is probably too low right now. But first this year, we were paying one eighty-three, so.
So, that's more. Well, that, if necessary, we can use gear slot. If necessary, we should also, sort of, display. You gotta be big time, ladies. Oh, plus it's five, five, I'm like, I'm like, five, I'm like, five thirty-seven, I'll prove it. That's really true. No, but, oh, oh, I'll prove it. Yeah, and it's, it's, it's fluctuating. I just want to.